Hello?
Hello.
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 Sorry, every time I, every time I log in, it's a little bit different. They must update things, right?
Good thing we're almost done doing this.
Yeah, good thing.
Well, hello.
Hi there. You shaved, Jeremy.
Yeah, it had to come off summertime.
Yeah.
Got my haircut and it was just like, I was like, oh, no, that's gotta go. It'll grow back. My wife's upset about it, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I look like a weirdo. It's part of the deal.
You look really young.
I thought it made you look younger, but.
Yeah.
Oh, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
At least, at least somebody likes it.
Oh, my God, a little baby.
Oh, there's still stubble there. If I, if I shave with a blade, oh, man, I look like a child. It's crazy. I get carded everywhere.
A bad thing.
All right, so based on Mr. Freel's recommendation, I am not muting. I'm leaving everybody the opportunity to mute themselves. So if you are not a board member, if you could please mute yourself. So that we don't have background information or background information, background voices and sounds and so on. I would appreciate it. And I believe Tammy set this up so that it's automatically taping. So we're taping right now, just so everybody knows. I can't turn it off. Or somebody set it up that way.
Hi. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hey, so I think everybody's here.
Yep.
I see, I see, oh, there's Bill. Bill, are you there?
I am here, I think.
Okay, yep, I, I don't see you, but I hear you. Not that I have to see you, but. So far, just visually, our Jeremy and I, okay, well, with that, I guess it is. Did I do the share screen, right? June, you see the June 11th work session?
Yep.
Okay. And was it 4:04? All right, let's call this work session of June 11th to order. It is 4:04. Okay, again, all board members are present. Okay, so with that, agenda reformatting discussion, Tim Freel. Tim, I didn't see Tim on the line. Mitch?
He is not going to be able to make it.
Okay.
But he was hoping that there still would be discussion about what he had presented.
Okay, but it's on the regular board agenda, right, for?
Yeah, if, if something comes out of this discussion, yes, then there is a spot on the agenda for changes if, after this discussion, the board wishes to make some changes. So he had presented both a, an example page of one without a public hearing and one if a public hearing.
Okay. Anybody have any thoughts on what he was?
I really liked the meeting agenda he sent out. I think that just helps keep us flowing a lot better than we have been, the way it's laid out on this one. And I just wanted to go in here. And then just the recommendation, he had approval of agenda. Whether without additions or deletions. So at that point, instead of doing our independent additions like we've been doing, when we do that gen or approval of agenda, we would just say approval of agenda and keep it as standing or approval with additions, if there were additions or deletions, if we took something off. Would save us a lot of time as well. That's really what I got out of it is I went through it is this really gives us a way to streamline our meeting and accomplish a lot more business in a shorter amount of time. I don't, did everybody else get a chance to go through that?
I get.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, you're fine.
Oh, I looked at it and there was a couple of things that I liked about the new format, but I like our old format better, honestly. But I could see adding something along the lines of old business and maybe new business, splitting that out or some type of way to do that so that we have more follow-up or follow-through on some items that keep getting left behind sometimes after a board meeting. So that was.
I like that, too.
But I like the consent agenda kind of, because it really just kind of lumps things together. Like if you have questions about it, you know, we work through that at the pre-work session, or even if we don't do the work session like he was talking about, and answer those questions, then, then you just are approving all of that stuff at one time. Personally, and I don't think you should have both public comment periods at the beginning. You should have one at the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
I would, I would agree with that, Jamie. I, I don't, quite honestly, you know, the, the agenda format that we've been using for the almost six years that I've been on the board has worked, you know, relatively well. In, in all the past years, we've, you know, we've not had the length of meetings that we've had here recently. I think part of that's due to the Zoom. I think, you know, once eventually we get back to in-person meetings, a lot of this stuff will be cleared up. I, I think to have the approval of agenda slash additions. You know, I don't think there should be a lot of additions, but if from time to time, there may be things that need to be added to the agenda for, you know, immediate reasons. I agree that I don't think you should have, you know, back-to-back public comments. I don't see the point of that, and I also don't see increasing it to five minutes per speaker. A lot of townships only allow three minutes per speaker. I think, you know, we allow four. I think that's more than, more than adequate. And I think it's important to have, you know, a public comment at the beginning of a meeting and then another one at the end of the meeting. And in terms of our consent agenda, having the approval of the minutes and the payment of bills. In, in the past, it's been the consent agenda. You, you don't need to take a roll call vote. It's simply, you know, all in favor, say aye, and, and it's done. You have the discussion to get things cleared up. And so, and then some of these things, correspondence, you know, that used, things of that nature usually are in, in the informational section. So it's in the packet that board members can read if something they want to, if it's not something we're taking action on, I don't think it needs to be part of the agenda. The committee reports, we've always had that, and you know, oftentimes there are things that come up that, you know, a, a board member might want to present some information on a committee, like, you know, for instance, the bike path or, or something. And then we also, you know, include, you know, the EIC director and role in those things. And as far as reports from staff, I don't, I guess I don't really know what that would be. I think that's what we have a superintendent for or to, you know, report on things involving staff. And I, I don't really know what unfinished business would be. Those are, you know, any items that were postponed, we put them back on the agenda to, you know, if we needed additional information. So I, I, I don't, I mean, this isn't that far from what our, our current agenda format is. So I just don't see the point of, of making this change. I think there's too many things in here that we would have to redo. And then it, it puts it back to where our original agenda was. So I, I, I don't see the need to make, make this change and then have to go through and make the change in our protocol manual and, and all the other stuff. So I appreciate Mr. Freel, you know, going through and putting this together for us, but quite honestly, I, I, I don't see the advantage.
Jeremy had started to say something, I think. Did you have anything to add?
I mean, I understand his intent and he's, you know, he's trying to get us to streamline our meetings so that we're not sitting here for five, six hours at a time, especially on a Monday night, when we're not getting out of here until midnight and everybody's dreary-eyed by the end of it. But I also agree with Mr. Palmer, you know, I mean, the agenda that's up there has, has worked well for quite some time. I guess I'm on the fence.
I guess I'm in agreement with Bill, other than just adding the second public comment that we did in just recently. Just rather just keep it alone.
Okay, Tim, I don't think I heard anything from you.
Sorry, I was waiting for a pause. So the, no, I, I, I guess I'm understanding a lot of viewpoints here. I don't have a, a strong opinion, just. I mean, I wasn't, wasn't really looking to update our, our agenda format. I, I appreciated his comments. I think like Jamie and others that have also, I, I, there's, I, I get his point. I, I think his, his suggestion follows more the Robert, Robert's rule of order concept, but but, but we're not exactly that generic. I mean, we're, I think we've, we've evolved into the agenda format that we have today over the years for a reason. I think it's got more to do, as far as if we're trying to deal with improving speed, it's got more to do with just kind of keeping everybody on a, on a kind of a metronome. We gotta just kind of keep this thing moving and, and I guess our discussion comments need to be more laser and that's, that's kind of what strikes me, but I think Zoom also is, is also a hindrance here, but at the same time, you know, Zoom also offers other advantages, but, but I can see how it definitely makes our meetings a little longer. So I don't see that this solves all the problems that we might each realize we're trying to solve. You know what I'm saying? It's like just, his suggestion is not a, is not perfect.
Think this is, you think this is a situation where we should wait until we go back to live meetings and run the agenda for a while and see if maybe some of those changes might be a benefit after we're back in live meetings?
Yeah, that's a good point, Jeremy, for sure. Since we, I mean, obviously, we haven't as this new board met in person yet, so we'll see how things flow. Okay. Great. Well, then are we ready to move on to the tax abatement policy presentation from Todd?
Sure.
Okay.
Did you, did you have any comments, Anne, on the agenda? What are your thoughts?
No, not really. I guess, I mean, I, I definitely didn't like the idea of both public comments at the beginning. I think it's important to have the one pop, public comment at the beginning about agenda items that we're going to be discussing and acting on. You know, to hear the public's input before we discuss and act on them.
Right.
And then I think it's important to have a public comment after we have done action so that the public again can voice their opinion, positive or negative, on action we took at that meeting. Otherwise, it would, you know, make another couple of weeks before they could really speak in regard to a topic that we talked about. So yeah, I mean, I, I definitely am all in favor of shortening them up, i.e. the meetings. I think that over two hours, we become unproductive personally, especially starting at seven o'clock at night. And, and if we are going to continue to have long meetings, then I think that we need to lay out the agenda. If we have people that are, we're inviting to speak, they need to be at the very beginning so that we're not keeping them on for any longer length of time than what we're already asking them to be. Since we do start so late at night, but that's just. All right, but I'm ready for Todd if you guys are ready.
I'm good.
Okay. All right, Todd, you're on.
All right, well, good afternoon, everyone. I have Rob from Mission North is on the call as well, and I'm loving this mute, unmute your own self. This is nice.
Yeah.
Um, I'm going to do less of the talking. I'm going to turn it over to Rob, but I will at least bring the board up to speed as to, you know, why we went, why we got involved in this project and, you know, what we hope to come up with, and then I will turn over to Rob. This is something that came out of the EIC, oh, you know, third quarter last year. As we look to try to bolster, you know, more, you know, manufacturing opportunities, or if we look into a spaceport, if it comes, you know, what, you know, the question I always get from everybody and anybody is, well, what, you know, what do you, what kind of incentives do you have? What, what are your incentives? So we recognize that the industrial incentive package that we had was, was aging. And so we thought, well, it might make sense just to do some benchmarking. Look at, look at the competitive environment, what are other communities doing in that space? And then the, the second thing to look at was, how do we, how do we create a toolbox or better toolbox that invites and incentivizes folks to do, you know, downtown development or commercial development on that corridor? So that led us to hiring a consultant to help us sit through those things. We want to put this in front of the board today, so you guys have an opportunity to take a look at where we're at. I think we have three, if not, you know, four possible tax abatement programs that we can implement. We get your, you know, basic assessment or not, or you guys could tell us to shut it down. We, we hate this idea and we can and will, but the next step would take it out to the citizens and have stakeholders making, make us a part of an upcoming downtown summit to share thoughts, get public input, and then we would bring it back to the board for a final, final approval. That's the direction we end up going. So without further ado, I'll, Rob, if you can unmute yourself and kind of just give a quick presentation to the board on, on where we're at with things.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, well, hello, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Rob Bocicalupi. You can call me Rob. As Todd mentioned, I was, I was engaged to help out with a few things. One is evaluating the current township industrial tax abatement policy. And also to see if there are some abatement policies or abatement tools that you can use in your commercial districts to help out there. And then, and then I guess thirdly, maybe help out a little bit investigating some other tools that you can use in your commercial areas. So with that, just a question, I guess for Todd. Todd, is the, did the board get a copy of that memo from yesterday? Or do I need to share my screen? And maybe both of those things would be helpful.
Yeah, well, the board should have received your information in their board packet. But I guess it's up to them if they'd like you to, you know, as an alternate, share your screen and go through at least the, I want to call it the, the, the matrix, but the, the review of the different abatement programs.
Yeah, if you, if you have that memo, then I'll just kind of quickly go through that. I think probably the, maybe the best thing is to start out just after the memo, which is the, the schedule, the, we call it a tentative schedule. I just wanted to go through with the board kind of what the process is. So if you all can see that in your, in your packet. We kicked it off in April with the, with this kind of steering committee, and the committee had representation from, you know, township board, the planning commission, staff members, including, of course, the assessor, who is a critical piece of the puzzle. She's the one who, you know, who administers these tax abatements. And she was, and she wrote the last policy, so she was, you know, invaluable help. So we kicked it off in April, and then we got into some details at another meeting, May 6th. And then kind of finalized the draft on May 14th. Obviously, we're here today. We just wanted to check in with the township board, as Todd indicated, to, you know, get your, your assessment of it, if you think we're going in the right direction, or if you have, you know, concerns, you want to address those now before it goes too far along. And then eventually, as Todd indicated, there would be a, a town hall meeting where this would be kind of presented to the public, get their input, and then eventually back to the township board. And then, and then, you know, a training session for whatever we end up with. And then also.
Can I interrupt for one second? Did you say, Todd, this should be in the board packet or in a separate email? Because I'm not seeing it in the board back.
No, I'm not either.
Uh, yeah, you're, you're, you're right. I misspoke. It should have been, but it should have been in this, this packet for this particular work session.
I don't think we got any.
Oh, we didn't get anything for this.
We didn't get anything.
Ah, okay.
So, um, I mean, just.
Can I share my?
Yeah, maybe we'll just, I, I, I don't know if I need to do it. Let me just see, I might need to allow you to do that, or just see if you can, I guess. I mean, it doesn't, I make, oh, I think I have to make you the host to be able to share a screen, Rob, okay?
Still saying, I can't, still saying.
I'm gonna, yep, I'm gonna, you're, you're now the host. You're in charge. So go ahead and share your screen.
Okay, there we go. Let's see.
I'm sorry for that confusion. I thought maybe I was missing, missing something, but I just went through the whole packet and didn't find anything, so.
Try that. Okay, can you all see that schedule?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay, great. All right, well, I'll just go through this real quick again. We started in April, as you can see, with a kickoff. And, and that actually was with, again, that committee that I was talking about with a, you know, pretty broad representation. And we met two more times in May, and that's how, that's kind of how we got to this point today, which, of course, is on the schedule as well. One thing I did mention, did not mention before is that next week, I'll be attending the Economic Improvement Committee meeting, really to talk more, not so much about the abatement, the abatement tools, but other tools that they might think about in helping further, you know, the goals of the, of the township. So that's next week on Tuesday. But also, you know, further down the road, there would be this town hall meeting, you know, so we can get some public, we can present it to the public and then get some input from the public and ultimately get back to you, the board, with, you know, something more final to consider. And then ultimately, you know, we have a, a training session where we can go through how this actually works, make sure everybody's on the same page. So that's kind of the, that's kind of the process, just to give you that, a sense of that. And then I'm going to flip up a little bit to, actually, no, I'm going to flip down. So like I said, we, we looked at two things. One, the first thing would be the, I'm trying to make this a little smaller. See the whole thing. Can you see? There we go. Hope you can see that whole matrix there. We looked at the current policy, which the township, as I understand it, adopted back in March 28th of 11. And then compare that with the law as it currently stands. And as, as you all know, the legislature is constantly tweaking these laws, or changing things, or adding things in, or taking things out. So we wanted to take a look at what the current law allows for, compare that with what the policy allows for. And what we found are a couple of things. One is that there, there is a, there's a whole other category of kind of businesses that the law allowed for that were not in the policy. So we, we went through those and we actually kind of picked, picked and chose some that we felt that the township, you know, might want to add in. There are others that we, we did not add in because we, you know, didn't think they were appropriate. So that was one thing we spent some time doing. The other one was, I guess the other thing we noticed is that the law allows for tax abatements to apply to speculative buildings. We talked about that, decided, you know, we probably don't want to give out tax abatements for speculative buildings, so we kept that out. But with that in mind, you know, if you go back up to the memo here, these are the uses here that the committee ultimately added in as new businesses that you can use this tax abatement for. Versus a, you know, strategic response center, and these are all defined in the act, by the way. A logistical operations center, qualified commercial activity, which I see defined down here, because it doesn't, it really isn't commercial at all. And a logistics facility and an agriculture processing facility. So so that, these are the things that the committee felt we should add in to broaden it out a little bit and make it, make it a more, I guess, an all-encompassing tool. So that in mind, that's, that's kind of where we ended up with the policy in terms of the nuts and bolts that you see before you in the memo. Let me just go into the, I don't want to, you know, go into the nuts and bolts or the details of the policy, but I will point this out. The policy allows township to, you know, by the way, tax abatement is completely up to the township board, you know, even if you adopt a policy. Ultimately, you decide as you, as you receive applications, you decide whether or not, you know, you want to approve that particular application. But, but what the policy does is it gives you some guidelines. It gives the applicant some guidelines as to what the township is thinking in terms of what you will allow and won't allow. So, and so this score sheet is, is what, and this came out of the old policy that you currently have approved. This is typically what you would use to score a, an application. You come up with a certain number of points. You go down to the bottom, you'd have a, you'd have total, total points, and that would dictate how many years you might issue a tax abatement for. This should probably say years, because this is all years. So you can abate taxes for an industrial facility of, you can abate them up to 12 years. But, you know, many times you would not do that. You would just, you would do maybe a partial tax abatement for, you know, four years or six years based on, on the scoring. And again, this is, this is out of your current policy, so this is not a change to, to your policy. Other than that, you know, again, let me just go back here one more time. Tax abatements themselves are not, you know, if you have a new business coming in and they want to take a vacant piece of property and they want to build a building and put in a whole bunch of jobs. You should know that you would not abate all the taxes, you know, that, that's not the intent of the, of the tax abatement. It's simply to abate up to 50% of new real and personal property for, like I said, up to 12 years. So it's only, you know, a maximum of 50% of the value. So it's only, you know, a maximum of 50% of the value. Um, and that, if I'm correct, does not include land, so it's just the building. So it's really just, I think as Todd was saying, it's really just a tool that you would have in your toolbox for when industrial businesses come to town and they're, you know, they're kind of think, you're, you're looking at other locations. This is something that you can offer and quite frankly, other, um, communities offer that you, that you can provide to kind of entice them to us, go to township. Um, speaking of other communities, uh, we looked at, um, a number of other communities that were kind of thought of as peer communities around the area. That included Tawa City, uh, we also looked at, uh, West Branch, we looked at, um, Grayling. Took a quick look at Gaylord, uh, so we, we looked around and looked, and I can tell you that with the exception of Tawa City, um, they all offer abatements. Now, not that Tawa City doesn't offer abatements, they just don't have a policy, they, they don't have a real sophisticated program in place offering abatements, but all the other ones, you know, they do offer tax abatements. So, any questions on, are there questions or thoughts on the industrial tax abatement, uh, program? Again, not many changes other than, of, of what you currently have, other than adding in a few additional uses indicated in the memo, that the committee felt, um, you know, might come into town. They might be the kind of business that might come into town and we might want to be able to offer this potentially, uh, to those businesses. All right, well, if there are no questions on that, I'll move on to, um, the commercial districts.
I'm sorry, I do have one question, it's Anne. In the, in regard to, you're talking about the industrial area, which is pretty much the former Worsham Air Force Base, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so that, uh, not all of that area, but a big chunk of that area actually has the LDFA in there, where we are already foregoing growth. So how does that work?
Yeah, you can layer, um, tax abatements onto areas where you have tax increment financing in place. I assume that's what's going on with the LDFA, that you're, the LDFA is capturing taxes and-
Yes.
And I think mainly what that might do is it would, that would take, you know, if, if you did institute a tax abatement in the LDFA area, it would reduce the amount that the LDFA, you know, is capturing for, for its purposes. So that's something you'd have to consider if you had an application in that area.
Right, okay.
Okay, with that, we, we spent, um, again, a lot of time talking about commercial areas and their, the state of Michigan offers a few, uh, four or five different tax abatements for commercial areas. Ultimately, ultimately, we found out that, um, almost all of them, except for one, does not qualify in Ascotah Township. A lot of them have the same criteria, like for example, the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Act, the Obsolete Properties Rehabilitation Act. You know, they just don't, you know, Ascotah Township unfortunately doesn't qualify. In some cases, they do, you know, townships do qualify, but they have to be a certain size. And unfortunately, Ascotah Township did qualify. But the one that did is the Commercial Rehabilitation Act. And one of the things that we heard, that I heard, um, coming from the committee is that, you know, one of the main needs in the commercial districts is investment in existing buildings. They have a lot of buildings that, um, that just aren't in turnkey condition. So this is a nice tool that you could bring to bear to help entice investors or, you know, owners of property or developers to invest in their property. It is a tax abatement, in this case, for 100% on the taxable value of new real, real and personal property. So in other words, if somebody took a vacant piece of property and they built a new building, um, it would be on the building itself, it could be up to 100%. Again, it's all, you know, ultimately up to the township. But it could be up to 10%, or 100%, excuse me, of the building value, uh, for only up to 10 years. It can't be up to 12, it can be a maximum of 10 years. And it can be things for, um, if you're, if you have an existing building, you know, again, going back to that. Um, it could, you can, uh, should I include that person? Galaxy Crown is in the waiting room.
Yes, please, yeah, I guess I don't, I'm not even getting the notification to say, yeah. Cause you're the host right now. Otherwise, I'll be getting in trouble later on for not letting somebody in the meeting, so yeah.
Just out of the bin, so they should, uh-
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so you, you can use it for a various, or a list of various things, uh, related to renovating an existing building. Changing build height, building height, HVAC, you know, heating, ventilation and air conditioning, foundations, things of that nature. So these are all the kinds of things that you can use in an existing building, uh, you can use as tax abatement. So it's another very nice tool, um, to at least have at your disposal, um, to help entice the kind of development that, that you would want in your commercial areas. And so kind of going back to comparing with other communities and we've got a number of other communities about this kind of tool. And it's a little bit different, I think, with commercial properties. With commercial properties, there's a bigger set of tools that you can bring to bear for redevelopment of a commercial property. Brownfield is one, I know, uh, you guys are working on, uh, kind of activating your Brownfield, um, authority. So that's, that's good, because that's a very powerful tool that you can use. There are other things that you can bring to bear that MEDC, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, can bring to bear. And with commercial properties, it's really kind of, okay, what, what's the best mix of tools that you can bring to bear for a particular project? And, um, you know, talking to Grayling about this and they ended up, they do qualify for neighborhood enterprise zone. So they ended up using that tool with a whole bunch of other tools to put together an incentive package for, in that case, it was, I believe, a five-story, um, mixed-use project in their downtown. The, the point is that, um, do other communities use these tools? They definitely use, um, tax abatements. They may not necessarily have used this one, the Commercial Rehabilitation Act. But they, but they would use it if it was the appropriate tool. I know in, where I am, uh, Traverse City, they are looking at using Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Act for a project downtown. So that tends to get popular when it more in the cities and villages. So, um, in this case, we wrote a brand new policy, but it actually looks a lot like the, um, industrial tax abatement policy, I'm just gonna scroll down to that one. Interestingly, the, um, industrial tax abatement, uh, comes with an, you have to have an agreement with the company. You do not, um, with the commercial tax, so. So just kind of going down to the score sheet, we developed a score sheet for this tax abatement. The investment that they're making. Number of full-time equivalent jobs that they create. And in this case, are they including a housing component? Cause that's another thing we heard is Ascotah Township really would like to entice more housing, uh, in township. So that gets you some points. And then finally, is it associated with public amenities like new sidewalks? Even, you know, could be boardwalks, plazas, that sort of thing. So you get points for that as well. And that just kind of helps you score it based on how long the tax payment might go for. And we did spend some time on this and we tweaked it a little bit at, at our last meeting. So this is kind of the end result of that, of that tweaking. So with that, um, I, one more thing I want to say, just on the agreement, um, I would, and I mentioned this in the memo. You know, please do ask, once we do get to the point where, you know, if you want to proceed with this, please do ask your township attorney to look at the agreement, because, um, you know, as I mentioned, the legislature is always changing laws, laws are always changing, court cases are always, uh, taking place and, um, it would make a lot of sense for your township attorney to make sure he or she is comfortable with the, uh, kind of a sample agreement that's in the industrial tax payment policy. So any, uh, questions on any of this? As I scroll up.
Um, I got a question for you, Rob, this is Jamie.
Yes.
Um, we have an industrial park with a solid township. How would that affect that if somebody was interested in property there?
So does it straddle the boundary between the two townships? Is that how that works?
I believe that it's, no, I think it's our, it's all the way in a solid township, but we have always been a part of it from the beginning. So like when a property sells, we split the proceeds, those type of things.
I would have to defer to your assessor Nancy, but if it, my kind of initial take on it is in terms of tax abatements, um, if it's a property not in Ascotah Township, then, you know, that would really, you know, you wouldn't be able to offer a tax abatement for property that is not in your township. So, you know, this would not apply in that case.
Okay, even though it's part our industrial park.
So it, yeah, it's owned by the township, but it's not in the township. Yeah, it has to be in the township.
Okay.
In the township, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for that question, that's, that's a good one.
Any other questions for Rob?
Uh, just one quick question, Rob, uh, this is Bill Palmer. On the previous table you had on there, the, uh, there's only that one, uh, public act that applies.
Yes.
Three that, that do not, that we don't qualify for. Uh, and, and it, it shows that that, uh, act expires December 31st, 2025. Uh, does that mean we would only be able to use this for the next four years?
Yeah, you, you can, um, issue tax abatements up to that date, um, that can extend beyond the date. But that would be the last date that you could actually issue a tax abatement.
Okay, like you said, the legislation is always changing this, so by 2025, there could be some new, something new.
Right.
But as it stands right now, we would be able to use this for the next four years.
That's right, yeah, that's right.
So we could, um, we could issue something December 30th, 2025 for up to 10 years if we wanted, right? As long as we put it in place before the act expires.
Correct.
Okay, so it doesn't have to sign, yeah, okay. All right, any other questions for Rob?
All right, well, Rob, I appreciate you taking time to, to be the resident expert in that presentation. Um, I guess if the board doesn't object, uh, we'll kind of stage this into, um, our very next opportunity to have a town hall so that we can share it with the, with the public, get their feedback, and then we'll bring it back to the board and see what you guys want to do.
All right.
Yeah, thank you for your time, um, and I want to make sure I give you back-
Yeah, I was just looking for that.
Let's see here. Let me see. Go to the zoom.
I think I just have, maybe I have to hit request remote control, maybe, I forget, or I think you just-
No, he has to right-click on you and select you as the host.
Okay, thanks Jeremy, as always for your technical-
Quite welcome.
Make host, there we go.
I am the host now, okay.
Great.
Great, so let me just find the share screen and we'll go back to the agenda. This will stop the other, yes?
Thank you all.
Sorry, I'm talking out loud.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob, I appreciate it, so stay on a Friday.
Okay, you too.
All right. Great. So share screen is back to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, awesome, great, thanks Todd, as well, I don't know, are you hanging out longer or?
You bet, um, I think I have, well, we're gonna talk about the MOU under agenda and I think there's, whatever, but full disclosure, at 5:45, I have to, I have a deadline and I have to punch out. So we'll get, we'll get as far as, I hang around as far as, as long as that.
Well, hopefully we can all punch out by then, um, okay. All right, so moving on then to, um, the meeting packet. I guess, uh, we have some meeting minutes, three different ones, May 10th, May 21st and May 24th. And just remember, um, audience, you, you need to mute yourself, please, um, so that we don't hear any background noise. That's in your control, so please mute yourself. Thanks. Okay, that being said, board members, any comments on, um, regular meeting minutes from May 10th? Hey, May 21st? May 24th?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments on, uh, May 24th.
I honestly have not looked at them real close, so I might be making my comments on Monday.
Okay, um, well, on page 17 of the packet, it's page four of nine of the resolution. It's the demolition of 643 Bissonette Road property. Uh, I believe that was just removed, I believe. But if, if you read what's written here, it, it makes no sense, I, I- It says, "Mr. Cummings supported a motion by Mr. Palmer to recommend that the board postpone the superintendent to proceed with this work on behalf of the township and accept the quote from Bowden Company in the amount of 6,500 to demand." I, I have no clue what any of that means.
My recollection, we postponed that based on putting a process.
Yeah, in my notes, we just removed it, there was no vote, uh, we, we, we simply removed that from the agenda.
Yeah, I thought we postponed it, waiting on the RFP process.
Yeah, so there-
Yeah, I think that's correct.
There was no, yeah, there was no accepting of the quote from Bowden Company, I guess is part of it that was questioning. And so, okay, then on page, uh, 20 of the, of the agenda, which is page seven of nine, uh, it lists the, the part-time clerical employee in the treasurer's office. And then the request for appropriations, uh, I had the, I had in my notes that that was postponed as well.
The one to, uh, approve hiring the, the clerical assistant for the treasurer's office?
The appropriations, because they didn't, we didn't know where it was coming from. So yes, I think Bill's right.
Yeah.
It was postponed to this meeting.
Yeah, because we have something in our packet that, that deals with this, so.
Yeah. The higher part was okay, we just didn't know where the money was gonna come from, so we were waiting on an answer.
Yeah, but yeah, in the minutes though, where you'll see that it, it's the same wording under both items.
Yeah, it's the change.
Support and emotion.
Yeah, my notes are, um, that we, there was a motion by Mr. Spencer of I missed where to postpone for account number.
They made the motion to postpone.
Um, it was, the motion was made by Mr. Spencer and Miss, and Miss McGuirey um, supported it, so that's correct, but it's, um, it was to postpone for account number is what I had written down in my notes. Is that what you're saying, Bill?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I had, and.
Yeah. So we really didn't, we, um, I mean, I think the discussion was that, you know, Jamie provided the meeting minutes indicating, um, indicating, um, that it was a board approval from, you know, like the previous board, but then, you know, and, but there was no money budgeted, so like she indicated, and not to speak for you, Jamie, but that it was probably a, you know, maybe an oversight in regard to 2021 budget. Um, but then we needed to find out where that appropriation was gonna, what that account was gonna, where that was going to come from, right? So it should have been like one motion, not two.
Yeah, and the, and the motion was to postpone.
Right, correct, to, to postpone the whole discussion. There wasn't a motion.
Right.
So those need to be consolidated, I guess. I'll, I'll make notes here too, Josh, to go back with you. So you have the correct people making the motion and supporting it, but, but it should just be one motion and it's um, to postpone the whole discussion. Or action, I should say. We discussed it, but no action.
All right, do we have any other ones on that?
That was all I had.
Yeah, I haven't really gone through them. I'll double check, but. So I, I'm, if I do though, I'll get them to you before Monday. I mean, I will try to go through them tonight.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Just a couple of ones, like on night, page 19, bank reconciliation and chamber of commerce, says motion carried, got yeas and nays, but it's not all yeas. So there's a number of those in here if we're not spelling out how we voted individually, but should say all yeas if the motion is carried. You'll see that going through.
Gotcha, okay. All right, um, so then payment of bills, was there any um, questions on June 8th run that we need to look into before Monday?
I noticed the, oh, sorry. All right, I, I noticed the, uh, the Adobe Pro Plan, uh, annual subscription for 1,400 and change. Did we uh, get that all situated? So everybody in the building is all under one Adobe plan? Is that why that's on there?
Yes.
Fantastic.
And then I, I had a question on that, in that same group under unallocated on the same page, uh, just uh, three lines down from the Adobe is, I ask County Treasurer. It said, takes, oh, I guess that's probably supposed to be taxes owed from property acquired in 95 is I, I'm just curious, does that mean property that we acquired and we haven't paid the tax on it since 1995?
Correct. That was one of the parcels down um, by the beach. So in going to that, Nancy found that we acquired it 1995, and it looks like it was kind of like a land contract. It took us a moment to acquire it. And once we had made the final payment, it was never registered, so we had to pay those back taxes and register that, which is now complete and done.
Okay, all right. Okay, that makes perfect sense. That just, that, that seemed odd to me that we would ta, taxes outstanding for, you know, 26 years that
Yeah.
We're the worst bill payer of the community, I guess.
Yeah, apparently.
I can't believe that nobody had said anything about those back taxes to anybody and that we had to find out by ourselves that they were owed. No, I mean, no notification from anyone. I, that just boggles my mind.
I think it was just like you said, it was like a land contract deal where we entered into it and we paid it off, I believe it was just within a year and like two installments, but it just never got processed. So that property was, we had all the original paperwork to do it here, thankfully, but we had just never registered it. So it was still sitting in the other people's name from 1995 until now, so they only charged us the back taxes that were on the actual agreement for the amount you see with that check. And then now going forward, that property is uh, deeded to Ascot Township.
So there, there were no penalties or anything involved with that?
No, the only thing they got us is back in 1995, it was only $10 to register, so we had to pay $20 more because that fee had gone up.
Okay.
Oh.
Oh.
Little bit of inflation from 95 to 21.
Should have disputed it. Just kidding. All right, any other questions on, um, I forgot the date already, uh, June 8th?
I did see that, uh, it looks like, was it, was it on this run that the fire department refilled their postage meter for a dollar, or is that on the next one?
Yeah, I think.
Oh, a dollar fifty-three.
Yeah.
Not a dollar.
I just, that's, that's, I didn't, uh, I thought that was just kind of odd. That's an awfully low amount. They had to what, send out three letters and that's it?
Yep.
Yep.
And they, uh.
For the month.
And that's, is that, that's, that's for a Pitney Bowes device? Is that, is that right?
Right, the, yeah, postage meter.
Right on. I just usually, when I've serviced those in the past, they, they require a minimum amount. They don't let you usually put on a dollar. It's usually like five or 10 is the minimum to recharge the little battery coin money holder thing that's in the, in the unit. So I just thought that was an odd number for.
Yeah, that's divided off of a total amount we deposit.
Ah, now we're talking. Okay, so that was just allocated.
Have that total amount, but when it goes in, all of those have to be broke down by department.
Gotcha. Okay, I got you. Very cool.
Okay, does that sum up June 8th? I mean, June, yeah, June 8th. God, I can only remember what month it is, June 8th. All right, so June 15th, do we have any questions or need additional information for Monday night?
Uh, I, I just have one, uh, and, and that's on page 28. One of the treasure department, the, the tier four, there's OptiPlex 3090 Ultra BTX. Uh, that's, I don't know, but it sounded like it was something to do with the computers. I just wondered why we didn't go through IT right, or I, I just wondered what that is.
It's a new desktop, um, computer for the part-time position in the office that, uh, it actually has been, it's crashed. It doesn't even update or do anything anymore. Uh, I've asked several, several times about the, we used to do a where we would update our computer systems every so often. We were on a rotating schedule and we haven't done that for a couple of years. So I went out and got a quote and since it was within my budget to do that, I didn't go to anybody else.
Okay, was that, was that a lower bid than IT right would provide, or?
I didn't check with IT. I could, if you guys want me to.
I was gonna say, I don't think when we, um, I, I know when Tammy ordered the computers or the laptops for the new incoming board, we didn't go through IT right. It was gone through somebody else, but.
It has to be over so much money before we have to go out to bid for it.
Yeah. I think she got a price from them. There, I think their price might have been higher. Just, I'm just curious. Um, that's fine, that's fine.
Did, are, are you happy with the computer? Is it good enough?
Um, I haven't got it yet. I was waiting for approval from the board before I made sure that it was good to go.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I would just make, you know, the only, I mean, I have no problem with the, the purchase of the computer. I just like to make sure that the specifications for the, you know, the internal hardware is going to be sufficient for the, for what your office requires. And as long as the, as long as you're happy with that, then uh, it's, however you want to do it is fine.
Okay, um, I'll show you the, I can show you the, some of the specs over to you, to have you take a look at it, Jeremy.
That's, I, I don't even need to look at it. I mean, if, if, I just want to make sure that, uh, you know, if, if you're happy with it and it's got, and it's going to do what you need it to do in that office and not cause any problems because of, you know, insufficient hardware.
Right.
And, you know, I mean, I just don't want to see you get a computer with, you know, four gigs of RAM in it and, and a 200 gig regular drive. It's just, it just wouldn't be enough.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have a lot of data.
Oh, yeah. So just making sure that, uh, you know, that it's going to perform well and then, you know, of course, as long as all the other policies are followed, hallelujah, amen, you got it done. Rock and roll.
Thank you.
You know, problem.
Okay, any other questions on that check run? All right, moving on then to, uh, we don't, we're not going to have any subcommittee reports or project updates as indicated on the um, agenda anyways at this time. Um, so then on to the superintendent's report first on is the interlocal agreement of IBT. Any additional information needed there, do we think, or?
Just, just, uh, so you know, this is, this is an agreement that was uh, put together uh, by Fred Lewis from Plainfield Township. He, he he fashioned it after an agreement uh, that another municipality has, uh, similar to what we have. And it is, it's required by the US Forest Service. They, they want to know who's going to be responsible for maintenance of the trail. And under this agreement, that, that responsibility would fall on the IET and the various townships. I believe a Sable Township is taking this same agreement to their board for approval. And Plainfield Township, uh, I believe they have already approved it, or if not, they're going to be approving it um, very soon. We may at some point in the future, uh, add um, Baldwin Township to this agreement because they uh, potentially could uh, join in in this, in this uh, bike path effort, 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 effort to, you know, connect uh, down, down to Baldwin Township and, and on out to Alabaster. So um, it's, it's something that uh, is, is required. Uh, I would suggest we, I, I would, seems like we could have already sent it to the attorney so that we would have had his feedback by Monday, but uh, I think we can probably approve it Monday night. Pending, you know, legal, legal review and, and sign off, uh, but it's um, it's something we need to do to move the bike path forward. The Forest Service is uh, waiting. This is one of the items that are waiting to, to get from the IET for their approval of the path, along with several other items, but this is, this is one of them.
Okay, well, we can ship it to, um, Tim to see if he's got time to look at it over the weekend and stuff, for sure.
He already has.
Okay, awesome. Thanks, Mitch. He already looked at it or you already sent it?
He, he's reviewing it now.
Okay, all right. Well, then we might have some feedback by Monday night. All right, um, next on interim superintendent appointment.
Yes, I, Mitch had this to the agenda and I had a draft resolution written. I plan on making a motion to appoint Tammy Klein as interim superintendent until we can fill the position permanently. So it's open for discussion. Also includes a uh, bump in pay for the additional duties during that transitional cut.
Okay, when you say you had that um, resolution drafted, who drafted the resolution?
I drafted it from the past resolution of the superintendent.
I guess I'm a little bit curious as to uh, why um, the statutory requirements um, from the supervisor that are passed on to the superintendent wouldn't go back to the supervisor until somebody was hired?
Uh, as we hire a superintendent, I'd want somebody there permanently in place and Tammy had done the job when David left. And I think she's more than qualified to continue doing the job, therefore we'll be making the motion.
Actually, there was no gap in time. Mitch was here when Dave left.
No, he wasn't.
That's not true.
Yeah, no, there was a gap. Jamie Aaron was here. Mr. Reed was here.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other comments?
Oh, the resolution number isn't correct.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna point that out. Um, the resin, the resolution, um, I think identifies 2020 and it should be 2021-18, so.
Are we up to 18 already? Are we up to 18 already, or would it be 2021 dash, the next consecutive number from the last resolution we made?
I believe eight, I believe 18 is the next one. I just had 20.
Yeah, I'm not sure in regard to, I mean, Tammy keeps track of the resolutions, so.
Um, I, I, the only thing I will say at this time about the resolution is I think it would be a conflict of interest for Tammy to be the interim superintendent because she would, in essence, she would in essence, be helping hire her new boss, which would be a conflict.
Why would that be a conflict?
Yeah, she won't have a desire.
She does, well, she would have something to say, uh, based on the last process that we had, if we're going to go through the same process.
As now she's the assistant, I would, uh,
Well, she would get, she would get to comment either way.
Be part of the process.
Yeah, I mean, she'd get to comment either way, but she doesn't have a vote.
Right.
Well, like, like Ann stated, the by-state statute, when the superintendent is no longer with the township, then the duties go back to the supervisor.
As long as there's not an interim or a secondary person appointed and approved by the board. Which is the case I'm pursuing.
So are you saying that Ann's not capable of doing the job?
I'm uh, pursuing this option, Jim. So one person I'm bringing to the board, uh, I'd like to discuss from other members of the board, if it uh, does go through or before we vote on it, and what that increase in pay would be. Otherwise, I'll be making the motion. So I'd like to hear comments.
I guess, yeah, I, I guess my initial comment would be, Steve, that um, I don't think there's anything wrong with necessarily having an interim superintendent in place. Um, depending on how long the process is, I think we have, what, four applicants so far? Um, June 22nd is fast approaching. That being said, it seems like we would have had a discussion um, in regard to appointing a super, uh, interim superintendent um, with a draft resolution, maybe um, not indicating who that person would be until this board spoke about it more. Um, so.
As we do publicly together during a public meeting, I'm throwing it, so it's in the work session and in the board packet, so, uh, let's discuss.
I guess I feel that there um, probably has been uh, some discussion in regard to a couple of board members, um, based on nobody else's surprise, so, but that's my two cents. So. And I did, I did ask because it was indicated.
Is it a question or is it an accusation? I'm not sure what that means. I'm sorry, what do you say?
Yeah, I'd kind of like to know because uh, the only person that uh, I talked about doing this in the resolution, I think the agenda was Tammy, because I wanted to find out if she was interested in it. So if you have some knowledge other than that, Ann, I'd really like to hear about it.
No, I'm just asking you a question. It just seems like everybody else, I don't have any other knowledge, Steve. I guess I, I would have thought.
You kind of made a statement.
Steve, I would have thought, again, based on our protocol manual, I would have thought that you would have reached out to me as the township supervisor to even broach the subject, um, I guess. I guess, just out of.
And there's a process to add things to the agenda and I use the process to add it, add it to the agenda. So as we can only publicly discuss this as a board at a public meeting, this is the opportunity to do that. And I'm doing it prior to the board meeting and a work session. So I followed the process.
Is there a reason why you wouldn't have asked the, uh, township attorney to draft the resolution instead of the staff member that you were asking to fill that job?
She didn't draft it. I drafted it. I took the resolution that we approved for Mitch and used that as the template.
Any other comments before moving on to the next agenda item?
All right. The only question I would have is, are we going to, or do we need to have the attorney review the resolution for anything? I'm just listening to both sides this year and just asking the question because it sounds like we've got some concern on duties as well as getting it done. Does this, is this something else that we should have Mitch send over to be reviewed before Monday, just so we have that feedback?
I would think so.
I'm not opposed to review.
Probably would be a good idea just to make sure that the, uh, the resolution is fully in order.
Okay, we'll send it over to him then. And we'll get the date corrected, um, to 2021 dash 18 before Monday. Okay, um, 2021 DWRF bonds invoice.
Um, the only, the only comment I have on that is it, the D D R F is the, uh, primarily the, the sewer fund and, um, I just, I just think this is the wrong, uh, light on to be taking that money out of, not the water, instead of the water fund, it should be the sewer fund.
DWRF is drinking water revolving fund.
And that has to do with the sewer project. But, and in the budget, all of the bond funding is going into the sewer under our, in our budget, all the, the, um, bond funding is, is scheduled to go into the, the sewer fund. The loan, the loans are supposed in, in grants are going into the water fund.
Oh, then we'll look at changing the account.
And I think this is, is correct, that that money can be repaid with the bond proceeds, but the, the point is that in our budget, the, the bond proceeds are going into the sewer fund, not the water. If you look at our budget. That's why, I, I mean, leave it the way you have it. The, the only problem I have is, is if, if we're going to replenish that with bond funds, the bond funds are in the, are in the sewer budget, not the water budget.
Okay. So we'll look at that, um, where we're paying that from.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm just writing it down. Anybody else on that topic? Hey, in-person meetings. Sounds like, um, as of July 1st, we could go back to in-person meetings.
Do we want to, uh, take that leap and take the risk of, uh, the flu season kicking us back out of it? Or do we just want to go with our original intention to just push it on through for the year? And then reevaluate after flu season for the next year?
I say we go back to live meetings. I didn't think we had a choice, actually.
Yeah, I didn't think we had a choice unless you're, uh, um, an arms, in the armed service.
Now that would be after 2022. As long as you've declared a state of emergency, that'll cover you through the December 31st, 2021. But I guess my only issue would be, is I did talk to Robin and it looks like the new internet will not be in until July 13th. So that was my only concern being out there with trying to do the hybrid is making sure, because right now that internet's not as dependable as what we have here is what I've been told. So that would be my only concern that I've had with it.
Right, yeah, I had concern about facilities. Um, I had concern about, uh, and the way you stated it, uh, Jeremy is exactly what I was concerned about and that is that I'm concerned from the viewpoint of not shooting from the hip on this matter. I understand that the state is making a recommendation in that and providing us some guidelines here, but I'm, I'm concerned that with our township where we take in 5,000 people every week with, uh, Old Orchard Park and our heavy, heavy, uh, the heavy amount of tourism that we have here that we have, uh, we're at a different situation than most municipalities that don't have nearly that much traffic through us. I'm just concerned, I do, I would not want to have some kind of an incident with, uh, uh, with a resurgence of COVID and then have us on record for having shots from the hip on this point. I really think that we should be deferring this for some time. I don't know if it's really all the way through December, but definitely maybe through summer. When, when the tourism starts to drop off.
That is a good point.
Personally, I think we ought to push it into after Labor Day and then also look at an alternate venue that, uh, we can have more spacing. I know Jerry and I had a discussion with Mitch on this, uh, probably late March, early April. And I think Jerry may made a suggestion about using the, uh, uh, Lake Players Theater out on the base and seeing that that was an alternative location for us, so we could have more people.
I remember that.
I think we need to have more of a plan.
I disagree. I think we should get back to our meetings. We all go to the grocery store, to the gas stations or in and out of the building and already. It isn't going to change much, the seven of us that met.
Well, it isn't just about us. If there will be public there, the only hybrid aspect of this is allowing the public to also attend via Zoom. So we are really going full on live again with public coming in.
And we have, and we haven't approved any, uh, this hybrid meeting thing yet either. We haven't, uh, there's been some concern about that. Uh, now there's additional concern with the internet connectivity at that facility that might, uh, make it, you know, difficult if not impossible.
Problematic.
Indeed.
Exactly.
Problematic, yeah. I would prefer to go back to, to the, uh, you know, in-person meetings as well. But with the, uh, the stigma that's floating around this whole pandemic, it would behoove us to, uh, bide our time a little bit and, you know, make sure and peep out under the rock instead of just jumping out from underneath it and getting smacked by a car. That's probably a terrible analogy, but I think everybody understands what I mean there.
I, I guess I, I mean, I think we obviously need to, we haven't figured out how we would do it or, you know, zooming in for the public still being allowed, but I just, yes, I don't understand how as of, um, I mean, you can go to the movie theater, you can go to every, you're going to go to every place and then we're going to say that we're not going to have public meetings. I, I don't know.
Well, we can go to every place now. When the, when the cases go back up again, then they turn around and shut us right back off again. So, I mean, we've already had that, uh, had that happen to us a couple of times where they, oh, the restaurants are open. Oh, no, they're not. So, it's six of one half dozen of the other. I think we all do prefer the in-person meeting, but the risk is, uh, something that we need to consider.
At least at this point, I think just making sure we have our internet, the facility and what we're going to do a plan in place before we do it. Make sure it works. Get out there and test it.
Yeah, figure out a plan for how many people can be in each individual room. If we're going to do the extended, uh, monitor situation so that we can push it, you know, push the public throughout the library for proper social distancing, et cetera, et cetera, so on and so forth. Yeah.
Yeah, because we do have like the 30 persons per thousand square feet. Um, they are lifting a lot of those off, but, um, yeah. This little chart that I'm reading through here, just the different ways to approach it, but I guess our bigger concern is making sure we can get it run. We have the internet to support what we want to do with the hybrid meetings and that we test it out before we actually show up and then not have it work.
Right. And we also, if we're going to have a hybrid meeting, we also need to figure out how we're going to allow the P, the public attendees and the board to view the person or hear the person that's going to speak. So we're going to have to set up some speaker systems and other stuff. And I know.
Right.
M I, M I C TV is probably going to be able to take care of most of that for us, but we're going to have to sit down and come up with a plan that's acceptable to the board so that they can work around that and provide the things that we need within our, our guidelines.
Right. So I hear you. We definitely got some things to figure out. Yeah.
Yeah.
Hybrid situation, I just, sorry, go ahead, Tim.
No, 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 I'm just saying, I'm glad to hear, um, a little more agreement on the, the need for a plan. I don't want us to be caught in the middle of a ready fire aim.
Right, for sure.
Well, we don't want to have any of the people that do log in. If we get out there and the hybrid doesn't function, not be able to participate in this, you know. With everything we've got going on, I think we've all been trying to be as transparent as possible with the public. We want to make sure we maintain that. So at the very least, just getting this plan in place, testing it out. And then when we propose it, we know what we're doing and can say where it's going to be. Um, whether that's going to be the library or some other venue that allows us some more space.
And just for thought, being on a lot of Zoom calls in the last two years, having the same people on the call in the same room on different mics doesn't work.
It is really true.
Everybody will be talking over each other. It'll be big delays. You're not going to be able to understand what's being said. So it's got to be spaced out properly with, you know, a proper headset or headset where it's not going to pick up the next person. So we got some issues with that.
Okay. All right, then moving on to placeholder for Lake Street developer, MOU, Todd.
Did we skip the phase two water meter replacement?
Uh, could have. Hmm, no. No, that's later on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the superintendent's report. Um, go ahead. Yeah, my bad.
Yeah, you're looking at that. Yeah, I'm looking at the agenda, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
All right. Todd, are you there? Okay, I said, I was going to say, you said 5:45, it's 5:23.
All right. So is it, it's MOU time?
Uh, sure, MOU time, like.
Okay. Yeah, your, your packet, uh, I verified that the, uh, proposed MOU is, uh, in your packet for your consideration on Monday. Um, and I worked in conjunction with the township attorney to draft this and we, um, just took it through a special meeting with the EIC so that they could lay eyes on it. And bless it for your consideration.
Okay, it's in our packet. Where, what?
Page 43, I think.
It shows 48 on mine.
48, sorry.
Did you just, was it just included or something or?
Yeah. So we had a placeholder on your agenda.
Right.
Just, we just brought this out of the EIC meeting at like, uh, 2 o'clock, 2:50.
Okay, all right, yeah. No, I know it was on the agenda, but I, I print the, the, um, actual packet just because of ease for going through it the night of the meeting and it wasn't in there. So that's all I'm asking. So, okay.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, I mean, in the, in the spirit of you guys really can't do anything until Monday.
Yeah.
I think it addresses what you wanted to do, given a, a 45 runway for the developer to work with me and consider alternates. We'll, uh, bring you a report back after that exercise is done. And I figure they've got two options. They'll find something else or they come back and uh, refresh their, all out of you and then you make a decision. So it's fairly straightforward. I mean, at least from a process standpoint.
Okay. Well, I'm not looking at anything, so I can't make any comments.
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't know what else you guys would want anyway, so.
Okay. Sounds good. Anybody think they need anything more for Monday night? All right.
All righty.
Thanks, Todd. Have a good weekend.
You bet. You guys too.
All right, next, um, then is cost of living suggested payroll increase. That's from you, Josh. So what do you got?
Um, we were looking at, uh, addressing this. It actually came up when we were looking at the um, treasure hiring as well as the issues we're having with Al, um, getting park personnel, DPW. Basically put this together. I know, um, me and Mitch had talked about getting a wage study. Uh, but our bigger issue is getting our parks staffed and getting our people staffed. And I know we have addressed, uh, we've talked about this issue and I know previous boards have, we have had a pay freeze, but at this point in time, we are offset in such a position where it's hard for us to get employees because they can make, um, roughly three plus dollars more an hour than what we pay them um, for coming in as a new employee, whether that would be full-time or part-time seasonal. Um, which is an issue. So we brought that up and sat down, crunched through the numbers to kind of give you guys an idea of the issue. We didn't want to just fix it for one position or fix it to draw in new employees, not being fair to the current employees that have been there as well as ones that come back for seasonal end year after year. So we took it apart, um, put it together. I did send out a spreadsheet for you guys that gave us kind of a projection that, um, Shelley put together in our payroll system based off of what we have now. And then what those costs would change to. So it gives you the full-time seasonal, part-time seasonal, and then our full-time employees as well. And then calculated all of that out, rough estimate was roughly about $89,000 to finish out the year if we chose to move the wages to that and that would start us at an $11 an hour for all new hires.
I know that it's always, uh, frustrating to have to raise the pay, but, uh, on recommendation line, uh, number three, it says that there will be tears. And I don't know if crying about it is going to help. I think you probably meant tears like T I E R S, yeah?
Yes.
Just checking.
Yeah, and I mean, when we started putting this together, um, just, you know, for the point, it was based off of um, the McDonald's, Taco Bell, a lot of our businesses in town were at $11 an hour. Sadly, as of yesterday, I see they have now jumped to $13 an hour, so. Just trying to figure out how to address that issue for us. Uh, like I said, the park is, uh, a big D, uh, a big deal for us here. Uh, as far as what they do and what it does for the township and making sure that they're staffed and also our DPW, Public Works. So, yeah, we're looking, we're looking for input from the board. We wanted to make sure you had enough information that we didn't have to wait, you know, until September, when all these positions no longer need to be filled to try to address it. So.
Does these.
Not a comfortable one, but it's something that we do need to address and figure out what we're going to do so we can staff everything out and going forward. Um, you know, I mean, next year's budget, we definitely want to address the pay freeze issues and everything else, but for the short term to help us get employees as well as retain them, we would like to at least go to what we have proposed for that $11 an hour. And then that wage compensation breakdown for current employees. Um, to make sure that, you know, if you've been here for 10 years, you're at 1150, we're not hiring somebody new right behind you.
Does this competent, or does this, uh, does your, does your pay scale that you're look, that we're looking at here, does that compensate? Or does that take into account the benefits that are provided to the full-time employees?
Uh, that's just giving us the pay. So your benefits for full-time employees, there's a few of them that are going to move, which we would need to get into a wage study. Um, the payroll pretty much with our budget puts that in there, so we were not able to find a way in our system. When me and Shelley were playing around, that would give us anything. Accurate on the FICA or workman's comps, there would be an increase, but. Just more or less, the payroll number was the bigger portion to attack and have kind of a real number, which put us out at, like I said, about eighty-nine thousand. Just to cover the payroll cost for the, through December.
If we change those hourly rates, does that change the uh, the type, the benefits and whatnot that are, that go along with it?
Yes, like retirement benefits and some things that are calculated off of that. Um, but I'm. We don't, I don't really have a valid way to pull that number, and that is the only question mark in the process is. What that's going to come out to above and beyond what we're estimating on the payroll.
That wouldn't apply to the seasonal employees anyway.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
I'm just looking at the uh, you know, I I agree with uh, with what Josh and Jamie are talking about here, I just want to make sure that we're caught, you know, that we're taking into account that. On the full-time side, yeah, the the hourly rate might be a little bit lower, but when you get the Cadillac benefits plan, I mean, that's, that's a significant. Thing to have, that I doubt that McDonald's is providing. Or Taco Bell or any of the others.
It's just, yeah, the issue is to bring in new staff, we want to make sure we're compensating for it. Sadly, just in my review of my time here, I mean, our officers are underpaid. Um, you've heard Anne and Jamie who have been here, and they were here before when I was here as well, we had that nine, almost ten years, nobody got a raise, so. Unfortunately, the pandemic and the current circumstances that are going on are forcing us to take a hard look at something that has been kicked down the road and. Feel it's our duty to address this as well as a few other issues that we've had before us. And get these things taken care of, so we can make sure that our community still has these services.
Yeah, my, Josh, my, my only comment on this is, I I don't think it's quite enough. Uh, for the the seasonal employees, the the increase you're talking proposing is an eleven percent increase. Uh, I, in my opinion, I I think it should be more like a fifteen percent increase. Which is what you have for the senior seasonal employees. And then for the regular full-time employees, I would like to see a ten percent increase there. Uh, I I'm I'm afraid. Given the the people that we have, the qualifications that they have, uh, the work that we ask them to do. Uh, but I'm afraid that when other businesses start raising. Rates in order to get employees, uh, we're gonna lose people if we don't. Compensate now.
Yeah, that's our concern, like I said, when we started, Bill, it was. Eleven dollars an hour is kind of what was being pushed through town and. Sadly, you know, as as we were wrapping this up yesterday, I saw that sign at McDonald's for thirteen an hour. So I would not be opposed to doing more, I just wanted to make sure we got it out. And got kind of the board consensus, and I mean, it's something we can definitely work on and adjust, but we know that. Currently, you know, it's, we're coming up to July and Al still doesn't have everybody for the park. Um, I still have Bill checking in for D P W applications as well, so. I mean, it's trying to get the new ones, trying to keep the, you know, the current ones and make everybody happy, so that's why we wanted to. Get this before you guys as soon as possible, so we can start getting that done, because we, we needed these people six weeks ago, so.
Yeah, and I I think, you know, overall, the the uh, uh, a wage study would be appropriate for the township. For for down the road to give us an idea of what, where we should be, you know, going forward in the future, but. You know, we have an immediate need right now, like you pointed out, that we we have a need for people, you know. We should have hired, you know, weeks ago, and we're just not getting applicants, and in order to move that along, we need to increase rates, so. Uh, my my suggestion come Monday will be that it'll be, I'm gonna suggest that it be slightly higher than what you've proposed here.
Uh, sounds good.
I know it's. And I'm not, I'm not convinced that that will be enough, uh, but, you know, I think, I think it has to be a significant increase. Uh, to get people's attention and get people in here that uh, you know. Will do what we need to do.
So would this be?
That's what we're looking at is, you know, if we have a significant enough increase now to address the current issue and then make sure as we're getting into budgeting. We can iron out all the rest of the issues that we need to coming into that new year, but. Yeah, this, this was the only way we could come up with that would. Take care of the current employees, bring us in new employees and keep everybody. Um, fairly paid, so just making sure as we do those increases, we're not. You know, like you said, we have people who've been with us for a long time, they're taking a hit for the community and. We are having them do a lot of things that they're paid for, and we need to make sure that we retain them in their services. Versus them going down the road just for more money.
So is this gonna be two motions, one for the uh, the wage adjustment, and then addition, and then the second one to initiate a wage study for uh, later in the year? So that we can reevaluate it?
I know, do you think we could include that in there, Bill, so that that would already be getting done, or should we have that as an addition to do the wage study, so we have that available for our budget?
Well, I think our our immediate need is to uh, you know, approve this wage increase now, you know. Probably should have done this, you know, last month sometime, but here we are. Uh, so I think. We can put something in the, in the packet for, you know. Our next meeting on the uh, twenty-eighth. For, and get, you know, get together information on a, doing a wage study. Uh, I don't think that's something that needs to be done, you know, immediately, whereas, you know, this wage increase has to happen right away, so, you know, we gotta prove that. I think we can uh, put something together for the next board meeting in the packet to, you know. Uh, talk about. Um, you know, wage, a wage study.
Have any, have any of the board members that are currently on the board been uh, been privy to a wage study in the past?
No, I've I've pushed for several years saying that, you know. We need to look at adjusting the wages, our our, I, in my opinion, our, all of our employees, uh, including the police department are underpaid. Uh, given what they do, uh, but then, you know, COVID came along and. You know, kind of threw everything out of kilter, and uh, so I think here we are now, being pressed. Into an issue and uh, it it it, I guess, works out that, you know, now we need to take that action and and look at all of the. Pay scale for all of our employees and uh, and and put some, some notable increases in there to, you know. Reward the people that, you know, employees we have do a fantastic job for us, and they are. Um, they they work hard and 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 some of them have uh, a lot of credentials, things that they are able to do and uh. They need to be rewarded for that, so uh, you know, we should, probably should have done this, you know, several years ago or even before that, but here we are now, let's. Let's take it on and let's get this done.
Agree.
Jeremy, the present wage scale that's there, it was adopted either right after or right before. Like two, I wanna say early two thousands.
Yeah, excuse me, I, I'm just asking specifically about the wage study.
Oh, okay.
I would, I would, I mean, I'm, I hate to be that guy that's just like, you know, but. The, I, paying for a study when, I mean, when we can obviously see that there's a discrepancy in what they should be getting as to what they are getting. Do we need to pay for a study, or should we just use those funds to provide the pay increase? Is my question, I mean. I don't know, I don't know if I need a study to tell us that that we're not paying enough, I mean, we can look at, look at the different wages around the state and just kind of. Gauge, you know?
I guess, don't ask the question, you know, unless you stand the answer, so. You know, some of it, I think you're gonna find that you're, they're drastically underpaid. You know, but it's it's gonna depend on who you compare it to, and it's not always apples to apples, unfortunately, we are a charter township, but we have. We're a larger charter township than many of the charter townships, so finding a a decent comparison is gonna be hard. You know, and you don't wanna, so, I don't know, you might wanna pay for a study.
Oh, I'm not, I mean, if we have to do the study, we have to do it, I would just, you know, I mean. We've, we've heard the town balking at some of the studies that the township has done in the past, and uh, if there's some that we can avoid, I'd. I'd rather just, you know, spend that money on uh, on the employees themselves rather than, yes, we've, we've spent a bunch of money on a study, and yes, we should pay you more, we'll get to it.
Yeah, right?
After doing that study, we determined.
Yes, after, after the study, and you know, we're gonna, we're gonna think about the study for, uh, we'll have the study done in nine months, and then we'll consider it for, for another nine months. And then perhaps we'll have, you know, I just, it's. It probably wouldn't happen that way, but I just, you know. I just hate spending that money, I I'm I'm a tightwad, I admit it.
Summary, though, Jeremy, for sure. Yeah. But didn't you before, Jimmy, um, like, you know, with the listservs and stuff, didn't you get some information that way?
I did for the doctor's office, absolutely.
Right.
But you're only, you're only getting, I mean, it's just like any survey that you take, you're only, it's only as good as people that are applying to it, you know?
Right, yeah, yep.
I mean, you tried to find, that's why I said, maybe it's worth paying for a wage study because then, you know, gonna get. You're gonna have somebody do that for you and get it done, where if you're reaching out only to certain things, you might not get a comparison, I, you know, apples to apple.
Right, and there's also the flip side of the token, where if we don't do the wage study and we do all of them, then then. Somebody will say, well, you don't know what you're doing, you didn't do a study, and you're not an expert, you should have done the study so you knew, and I guess it's six of one half dozen of the other, I just.
Always.
Always. Indeed.
Well, I would say I I I kind of agree with Jer- Jamie, Jeremy, that I I hate to pay for a study for something. But I think perhaps what we would do is do an R F P. Uh, cause off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you. A company that would do that, I'm sure they're out there. Uh, I would like to see what, what the cost of doing that would be. And if it's, if it's, you know, an unreasonable amount that's charged to do a, to do a study. I would say that in some of our work sessions, when we start. Uh, which should be coming up soon, uh, our work sessions to determine our, the new budget. Um, I would think as as opposed to. Spending money if it's an absorbent amount for a wage study. That, you know, we put our heads together as a board in a work session and and. Come up with, you know, a new pay scale, uh, that we feel is is appropriate for our employees, I I.
I'm not opposed to that, I think that's a great idea, let's look at uh, especially since this was a rough year as far as income and whatnot for the township. And if we can, if we can budget those raises and uh, and get, get everybody to a point where we think that they should be. And maybe it's a little bit higher, a little bit lower, you know, depending on the that, uh, I'm, I think that we could probably figure that out.
Yeah, I think uh. Yeah, I I, you know, it'd be interesting to see what a third party would come up with, but. On the other hand, you have to understand that, you know, Ascot is sort of a different, we're a little different animal here with. Things that we ask, we ask our our friends, just example.
That could be an understatement, though.
Yeah, yeah, I know. You know, things that we ask our D P W to do, that other townships, you know, aren't necessarily uh. Having to be in- included in a a former air force base that has buildings that they're asked to take care of and. Have a beach that they're asked to take care of, and all the mowing and things on the be, on that former base that have to be taken care of, so. You you, I think you would be hard pressed to find, you know, another township that you would compare wages uh. To the, you know, to just a, what a, maybe a, you know, a normal township, I don't know, whatever that means. But, you know, we do have some, some peculiar circumstances here in Ascot that. You know, we ask our people to take care of, and they take care of it with with very few numbers, I mean. You know, they're, we don't, we don't have huge numbers in our D P W, and we ask an awful lot of them. And and same with, you know, Old Orchard Park and the work that Alan and his, his people do out there, I mean, it's just, it's phenomenal, so. Um, it would be interesting to, to, I'd be curious what a, what a, uh, works, uh, wage study would cost. And I guess we could do that without spending any money and find out what the cost would be, but if it's, if it's more than what we feel like we want to spend to get that information. Seems to me we could, at a work session, uh, come up with some numbers that would.
Right.
Move us along, so. That's just my thought on.
Yeah. What'd you say, Tim? Kind of muffled you there.
I said, I'm sorry, microphone wasn't in front of my face, I said, I agree with you, Bill. Um, you know, I I look at the amount of money that the Old Orchard Park staff. From. From Al all the way down, um. They generate, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars for this township, and um. You know, I I I feel like, since Al has been making it a game to improve. The, the whole experience of being at the park and increase the revenue of the park, you know. Over the years and did even a very good job during last year's COVID. Um, you know, despite that obvious setback, um. You know, I I just look at this and feel like. I start to feel a little guilty for the fact that we transfer hundreds of thousands of dollars of that revenue into other purposes for this township. I, you know, I've granted, we are not flushing, we don't have, you know, we're we're losing tax base. But at the same time, I don't want to uh, turn a a blind eye to the people who are actually helping to generate that income.
Did we lose Tim?
I just finished.
Oh, he just stopped.
Oh, okay, I thought it didn't sound, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it sounded like you got cut off to me too, I was.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, no, I hear you, we we shovel that money in that they're all working hard on, we wanna, you know, um. And use it for other things, we definitely need to make sure. Our staff, um, be it seasonal or not, um, are at a rate that, you know. We're in comp, you know, we're competing with other employers in town, um, so.
Yeah.
Definitely need to adjust, but.
Would be nice to see him have, offer the campers hot towels as well. Just kidding.
Yeah, I might start camping.
We get to twelve o'clock at night, we could get some hot towels too.
That's A, now we're talking, alright.
Alright, so ready, I guess, sounds like, you know, we we have what we, I guess, the the main purpose of. Or not the main purpose of this, is to make sure that we have the information in front of us and in the packet that we need to make a decision, so. Do we need anything additional uh, for Monday night, or are we good to go? Good to go?
Thanks, unless, Josh, you wanted to, you know, uh, adjust those numbers at a, at a fifteen percent increase. Uh, for the seasonal and then a ten percent increase for the full, regular full-time employees?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. I, I've got the numbers, if you, I I did that, if you want, am I into your?
Well, sure, I would love that. No sense doubling down.
Okay, I will, uh.
Ooh, it's raining, yay.
Is it really?
Yeah, well, it is here anyways.
Oh, yeah, sure enough, well, I guess we needed it badly.
Okay, alright, so ready, we got water meter replacement, now your item, uh, Jeremy. Um, water meter replacement and radio read installation proposal. Everybody, do we have, uh, do we need any additional information on that, or do we have questions that we need?
So this is, they're gonna put in meters with radios, so they don't have to walk up and touch the device on the side of the part of the uh, of the building.
That's correct.
And uh, we're starting out with twelve hundred of them.
Oh, this is phase two, we've already done a number of them last year. This is a phase two of a three-phase uh, project.
Gotcha, so when this freight, when this project is complete, will all businesses and residences have the new radio meters?
I'm not sure about that, I think this covers mostly residential, so.
Alright, and is this gonna be one of those things where they're coming into, uh, they're just gonna come over and swap it out, or do we, is this going to be a deal where? As time progresses and those meters are replaced, that they'll be replaced over time?
No, they, they'll be replaced uh, as soon as they get purchased, so there'll be a schedule of putting them in over the course of this uh, calendar year.
Gotcha, I just haven't received anything about about my residence being, or having an upgrade to the water meter, so. Is, are they actually needing, do they need to come in the house, or are they just gonna clip the wire on the outside and replace it with a different piece?
I think this is moving them on. I think this is moving them all to the exterior, so.
Right. Well, there's there's an exterior, uh, there's a little device that had that has. Yeah, the read pad and there's a wire that goes all the way around to wherever the meter is.
I I do know in a couple of instances, they have to go into the homes, so.
Yeah, in your basement, like it is a mine, they gotta come in.
Well, my my question was, is, does the reader pad, is the wiring for the reader pad the same? So if the wiring already exists and they're just gonna swap the pad, then there may not, there may not have been a reason for them to enter the premises. So I just.
No, they do away with that pad.
New new meter and uh, new radio read device.
So there's not gonna be a wire outside the house at all. It's just going to be, they just have to get within range of the uh, radio and good to go.
Right.
So if I put a jammer in my house, then they have to come in and look at it.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
Okay. Just wondered, just, you know.
If if you look at the capital improvement plan for this year, we have budgeted four hundred and twenty-five thousand for this project.
And it looks like we're getting close.
Well, we're under, we're under budgeted three hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
Well, I'm excited. I was, uh, one of my clients is another township here in Michigan and they've got all the wireless ones and they were, their water department guys were making fun of me. Because our township didn't, uh, make that transition yet. And here we go. Ha ha. Now I can, uh, go back and poke at them. Good deal.
Next.
All right, we're ready to go on. All right, um, seasonal part-time, um, treasurer's office funding. Oh, are we not?
The only, uh, the only question I had on that, I think probably we've already answered that is that, uh, you know, there wasn't money budgeted for that. Uh, but in the previous budget, it was, it was budgeted for eight thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, this is requesting appropriation of fourteen thousand. So I'm assuming that's ta- that's taking into account the proposed increase in wages that we're talking about so that.
It was, that was the thought. My thought was to put a little more in. So if you do actually make some increases, uh, you won't have to go back a second time.
Right.
Make another, uh, what's gonna be a budget amendment.
Right. And I'm I'm, Jamie, you probably can comment, but I'm sure it'll make it easier for you to find somebody to fill that position if it, if it's more reasonable wage than what we have currently.
Well, that's for sure. Definitely.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we have a proposed rate and number of hours, Jamie?
Um, I think.
Eight hundred and eighty hours was the prior.
Yeah.
What was it?
Yep. Eight hundred and eighty hours. Stick with that. And then.
And then it's just whatever the rate is.
Right. We, well, that's kind of how we got this discussion started about the pay raises for the seasonal for the overall. Because I thought that ten, the um, amount was a too low and like Josh, I don't want to go all into it again, but Josh kind of covered it. I mean, got other places. Yeah, giving bonuses and doing this, or I think we will never get.
So if we were to go with, let's say, for example, eight hundred and eighty hours, thirteen dollars, we'd be at eleven thousand four forty. So is that within what you're thinking or is that not what you're thinking? I just want to know where we're headed for Monday.
Right. Well, I I think that's why Mitch put that extra, just a cushion to see where we ended up with the pay increases. So as long as we don't go over the eight hundred and eighty hours, you know, we can adjust within the fourteen thousand dollars or whatever the pay increase turns out to be. So I think that's why he built that in there like that.
And you guys still build in FICA, Workcom, and other input, so.
Right.
Yeah, this is wrong.
Yeah.
And that person's gonna need to be bought because they're gonna be receiving cash.
Correct.
It's not an extra cost on our 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 carrier or to our insurance carrier because I thought I thought we just always had that in the treasurer's office. All we needed to do was add another name.
Correct. There is no extra cost for the coverage for that.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that, Jamie.
You're welcome.
And then we have two resolutions. We already talked about resolution twenty twenty-one dash eighteen. Um, and then we have the adoption of the news article, three signs ordinance. There's a memo there, um, from Nicole.
And just just for background on that, the planning commission has been working for over two years to, uh, uh, rewrite sign ordinance and that that came because of a Supreme Court ruling that had to do with signs. Uh, that virtually every every township and municipality that has sign ordinance, uh, was in violation uh, of 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 the Supreme Court order. So that's the reason we, you know, took it upon to, uh, rewrite our prior sign ordinance. And what you have in the packet is a result of, uh, over two years of work by the mission to put this together.
So we better just approve it, hey?
Absolutely. As.
As presented. Well, I mean, again, you guys have been working on it. I'm, I would assume that, um, that everything has been fleshed out and that's, that's why it's been brought to us, so.
Can you give us, or can you give me a quick, what's, what was the Supreme Court decision that that, uh, that prompted all this change?
Well, in, there was a lot to the Supreme Court decision, but in a nutshell,
Yeah.
you can't have anything, any language in your ordinance that refers to the content of a sign.
So if a porn store wants to put up a sign showing explicit acts, we have to allow it?
You don't, you can't, you can't, um, have an ordinance that restricts a sign based on the content of the sign.
Oh, well, that's begging for trouble.
You can only restrict the size, the location of the signs, uh, those kinds of things. Anything that has to do if 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 it's determined that you're you're determining the sign based on the content of what's on the sign, that's illegal. That, I mean, it is more involved in that, but you know, that's a, that's a nutshell version of of the Supreme Court decision and why most, uh, most sign ordinances were in violation of that ruling once they were that was put in place.
Interesting.
And it was, it was a.
Language here. It's, it's amazing how different this is.
Yeah, it's, uh, it was, it was item that was discussed at MTA meeting and we got the information from there. And, uh, we proceeded to work, like I say, for the over two years looking at other municipalities, uh, revise sign ordinances and, uh, taking from information from different municipalities with their uh, new sign ordinances that had been prepared by their legal department and so on and so forth.
Okay. Great. Um, we have quite a few others. Um, I think we already talked about the protocol, um, change agenda. Sounds like we're not gonna be really discussing much of that at this time. Is that what I?
I would think you're gonna take it off.
So then we would take it off the agenda, correct? Based on the discussion that we had earlier? Okay. So we'll just take it off the agenda Monday night?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll remove Monday. All right. Okay, next we have a ban shell use request for cardio drumming.
Can you tell us what that is, Ms. Richards?
I have actually done cardio drumming.
Have you really? Oh, man, I was just being facetious.
Yeah, uh, you basically beat a, um, bouncy ball with a drum, I mean, with drumsticks. And you do some jumping around and whatever else. Yeah.
Music.
Yeah, to music. Yep. Yep, it's pretty, uh, pretty exciting. Good way to get, um, aggression out and, um, get some good exercise.
So we need to schedule that for the, after the board meetings?
All work. Yeah. Uh, but no, they're fun. They used to have it Ray's, um, Ray's had them. It gets kind of crazy. I mean, the drumsticks go everywhere. Um, I know they've been doing it in Towas down at the beach for a few years. I don't know, have we had it at our beach yet? Jamie, do you remember being there?
No, not at the beach, but I know to the moon and back is having them and I think Ray's Gins having them too.
Right. Yep. So, and again, this is free, so they're not charging. So I know there's been discussion on that before, right?
So are they bring, do people bring their own ball and drumsticks or are those provided?
Usually you have to bring your own, but sometimes they have a few extra in case you want to just try it out one time.
Are there, is there any, uh, since they're not charging for this and it's just kind of a an open to whoever wants to show up, do they need to have insurance for this, since it is kind of an event, but they're not charging for it? I don't know. I'm just, you know, I've, I, you know, I was, I was a band nerd. And, uh, you know, when the, when the drummers get going, the sticks can fly and I've seen some people get hit pretty good with them. So you never know. Just asking. I was, uh, one of the callers had, uh, had a comment there.
That would be a Mitch question or we could call our Josh question. He can call, get a Paul, hold up Paul Olson. Maybe and see if we, if they need to have insurance.
It'd be like, uh, participating in a pickup game of basketball.
Right. I was gonna say, I thought, yeah, as long as they're not charging.
Yeah, then. Yeah, on risk.
Yep.
Exactly.
Okay, cool.
Heatboard part, you know, oh, yeah. Oh, I guess we have liability insurance on that, but right, but still.
Jeremy, if you want to borrow my stuff, you can go try it out. You can.
Don't tempt me.
Date, Jeremy. We can do that and then we could go to yoga afterwards.
You know, I've never done yoga. I have not in my entire life.
I'm not, I don't do well at it.
I probably wouldn't either.
I'm making shopping lists of what I gotta cook for the week during the whole thing. Do not clean my, my, my mind doesn't clear, but um, not of anything important. I'm not saying that. I just, yeah. Okay. So we're good with no more information is needed to make a determination Monday night on cardio? No? Okay. Um, then we have, uh, Fertile Field request. Is there something in your report, Mitch?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, they're out of order in the packet of the, uh, movie night is next.
Well, I just mean, some, you know, some of the things there's backup and some just is addressed in Mitch's thing. So and it is.
I I do, I did.
By the agenda.
Yep, I did read the letter and, uh, it does, you know, they're asking us to take fertile field off the disposable list.
No, 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 that's not the topic. This is the one for Jan Roberts, um, for, uh, additional, um, uses of the open air market.
Oh, I do not have that then.
For the fertile fresh air market.
Yeah, it's because it's just, it's in Mitch's request. It's in Mitch's report.
Oh, this is, is this the one where we approved like the first couple of them? Yeah, okay. So she's coming back asking for the rest now?
She had asked, uh, yeah, way back in March, if you do them all. So that was your decision was to let two occur, review it and then decide on the rest.
All right. Well, what's your review, Mitch? Did you go out and check it out?
There, we didn't get any type of reports, you know, of damage or police or anything like that. So I don't see an issue, meaning there was some problem caused by these, uh, two events taking place at all now.
It's, uh, it sounds to me like.
Participation is, is, you know, I I would say something like this takes a little time to grow. So participation isn't heavy, but it's not zero either. So you know, it it takes a little time to get something like that off the ground, especially if you're gonna do it, uh, every month and like I said, if there was some issues, uh, we would let you know, but we did not in in encounter any issues of any.
No, and I I did go to one of those events and, uh, it was a little chilly and windy that day. They were having a hard time, uh, holding their tents down. Uh, they were blown away out there, but, uh, they did have a food truck and I did have a pretty good sandwich there. So for me, it was, it was a success.
Excellent, excellent.
Yep, I went to, I went to one as well. Again, I think they, you know, they've struggled with weather when that, you know, because the tents, some of the people's tents were, you know, a little more sturdy than others, I guess you would say. And then, you know, trying to do it two days, some people break down their stuff completely and then come back the other, the next day and other people leave their thing up and then kind of try to collapse the tent. Um, but, yeah, I mean.
Yeah. The one that I went to wasn't, you know, extremely well attended. There weren't a lot of people there, but yeah, and it was kind of a chilly, windy day. But if if she feels like she's had enough success, I I think it's fine. We, you know, there's not a conflict with the dates. We let her, let them continue.
I don't have a problem with it at all. It looked like they were having a great time when I drove by. I didn't stop as I was unable, but, uh, you know, there were people out there doing their thing. They didn't leave a mess. We didn't get any complaints.
Oh.
All right, let it proceed.
Awesome. Okay. Um, next then on the agenda is bench application approval. Mitch?
Unless there's questions, I think this is pretty straightforward. To facilitate this, these requests, we need some type of a an application because otherwise, you know, it's, I want, I want a bench here. I want a bench there. We want to be able to control where they go and the type of bench so that they're uniform and and type and material.
The, the only question I had on that Mitch was the, uh, uh, see, you don't, you didn't have the, uh, the beach park on there. Are are we full up with benches there?
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, I thought that was.
Let, let me say this with all seriousness. You, if anything, you may want to consider in the future removing some that you already have. It, there's too many.
Yeah.
There's too many there. And and that, if if you want to put a hard mark moratorium, it should be at that location.
Okay. And then the other question I had is, I'm I'm not, I'm not sure what the fireman park is. Or the sunrise park?
Yeah, Al told me these and now I'm I'm blanking.
The sunrise park is Three Mile Park.
Yeah.
Um, the fireman park is, um, oh, that's in our parks plan. Where is the fireman park, Jamie?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't remember, but but sunrise park is Three Mile.
All right, why are there two different names for it?
Because Three Mile Park literally is what the locals call it, but it's called Sunrise Park.
Yeah, gotcha.
Yeah.
But that's a state-owned park. The township doesn't own that.
It's the, it's our section north of there. Actually, we have one or two beaches, uh, one or two beaches. These, one or two benches that were donated there. So, um, at the the north, the second park, Phil, we own that section from there to the sign.
You know.
Is that the spot where the P? So there's the parts with the gates. Those are the state. And then the north area of that where there's just holes in the trees that people park in, that's ours.
That's ours and it actually has a, uh, uh, walking path, bike path.
Nice.
That ends abruptly at public or private property. So it's, that's considered Sunrise Park.
And would there just be one vendor that would be ordering these, these benches from? Yeah, we, we had a company that we ordered, so they'd all be the same.
Right. That meant we continue because the thought is that, yeah, replacement repairs, everything would be uniform.
Okay. Yeah.
Right.
I think this is the good.
Yeah, sounds like a good policy.
Is the fireman park the one that's over across from the damn store?
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we still own that?
No.
No, that that's, um, was given to Isco County, so we can probably remove that. Um, I would just note that the benches, I mean, I know that, um, these prices, the bench prices probably from what Al maybe is putting out at the Old Orchard. But the benches that that we've specked at Riverbank, um, or, yeah, Riverbank, and I know we're not putting anymore at the beach park, but, um, and also Sunrise Park were more like eight hundred dollars a piece, I think. Um, so I guess we just need to make sure that we're using the same benches.
And this is all, the recommend for the bench came from Al. This is his recommendation on bench type based on his expertise and.
Right. And I respect that. I'm not trying to dispute it. I mean, that's what he's had success without at the park. But then we've also had success with another bench that is in the other parks. So I just, you know, the Riverbank park um, has the same benches as Sunrise Park and the same benches as, um, the beach park. So that's all I'm saying.
I think it would be too horrible to, uh, to have a couple of different styles of bench that we can put in there. I just think that, uh, the what what they're talking about is not putting in those little. what, what they're talking about is not putting in those little, uh, those little tiny decorative benches with the steel on the end that seem to rust out after a couple of years.
No, these are all resin and.
Yeah, I think we're just make, trying to make sure that we put in benches that are going to be aesthetically pleasing as well as, uh, stand up to the forces of nature for a time.
Yep, sounds good.
And I would suggest you leave the fireman park in there, uh, even though that's owned by the county that property there, but that is where our bike path will be going through. So there may be someone who will want to put a bench at the bike path there.
Can we approve that or is that going to be something that, that the county has to approve? Since they own the property now.
Well, it, it would be a bike path property.
I think the thought, if I remember the conversation right, was that if they got a request, they could process it, contact county. Say, do you want to do this? This is what we've done uniformly in our jurisdiction. Yes, no?
So we're going to facilitate the ask to the county if people ask us to.
Right, because, because people assume it is ours, so.
Gotcha.
And again, I think what his goal goal is, is the control. So we don't put too many in one place. Control where they get placed and then get some uniformity as to, uh, type.
Yeah. This is, this is a good proposal you have here.
Yep, very good. Thanks Mitch.
So.
Great. Next on then is movies by the pier. Good to see they're coming back again this year.
Yeah.
So anybody need any additional information than what's the letter? They've been doing this for like five, five, five years now, maybe six. I don't remember exactly, but.
Who, who, uh, who plays the movie? Is it the CVB that does that?
Yeah, yep.
And they apply for all the proper licensing for a public showing of, uh, all that fun stuff. Good deal. It's been awesome. My kids like to go down there. So, yeah.
Yeah, they have all their own equipment.
Yep, the, uh, the blue, what is it? It's, I think it's a blow up screen and then they've got like a digital projector and.
Yep, seventeen foot blow up screen and we let them store it at the beach park. Yep. In the same room that Rotary uses. For banjo or for, uh, the concerts. All right, then next we have, here's your one Jeremy.
Yes.
Yeah, fertile, um, moratorium request.
Uh, basically we received a letter um, asking the township to take fertile field off the disposable list for six months and then um, so they've asked to address the board regarding their request. So I put it on the agenda so they can formally do so and then you can act accordingly.
So this is, uh, so this, the historical society is talking about maybe moving their stuff over there. And they've had thirty years to do it and now they want to at the eleventh hour, now that we've talked about putting it out there for actual getting it, getting something done out there. Now they want to come in and say, oh, but wait, wait for us.
I don't, I can't speak to whether now the, the one gentleman that's on that letter. He states underneath.
Yeah, Fred Glass and Justin Griffith.
Yeah, but I, I can't say whether that means that that represents the entire historical association. Or just him, I, that I can't comment on. I, I don't, I don't have any.
And this is the same historical society that's having a, uh, it's, that's having a little fit about the parking area over there where there's other businesses that they're unable to have parking because they won't share theirs. Is that, is that, is that the same historical society we're talking about?
We only have one, yes.
Yep. Okay, just wondered.
I think what they're just, I mean, I guess my interpretation is, I mean, we know that, you know, um, I mean, Jamie can speak to this better definitely than I can, and I think Bill attended as well. I, I didn't go to any of the, um, weekly walks or anything like that, but um, I believe that they're, you know, um, trying to, uh, you know, keep it as a public quote, quote, public space and they're just trying to do some research on maybe some grant funding and um, different programs that maybe they could purchase and maintain it, you know, um, so.
Fantastic. They've had thirty years.
Right, just.
Yep, yep, so, yeah.
Well, I know they have, I know they have some ideas, things they'd like to do and, uh, you know, they may be good intentions. Uh, my, and this is just my feeling, I would, I would suggest that we, uh, leave the property on the disposable list. And perhaps if we did get a, a developer that was interested in doing something, a developer could work with these people to incorporate, uh, possibly what, what they would like to have done with the historical society and some of the other ideas they have uh, to incorporate that into a developer's plan.
That's a great idea.
So, uh, I mean, just because it's on the disposable is, doesn't mean we're gonna sell it. It just, it's there to get some input from developers of what, what's out there that, you know, might be a possibility and, uh, I think, you know, developers want to work in the community and work with the community. And these folks that are proposing this, uh, they, you know, they would be willing to work with them and, uh, come up with a plan that would make everybody happy. Well, I don't think that's possible, but would make, you know, a lot of people happy, so.
Most of the people happy some of the time.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just want to see all ideas of, like, you have to just keep me clear this at this point.
Is that Steve? Sorry.
Yeah, he kind of trailed off there. What'd you say, Steve?
I said, I, I'm after just keeping it the way it is at this point in time because I just want to see, uh, any and all ideas, uh, brought forward to us.
Yep.
Right, I guess this is where I'll, I'll just say, I, I would like us to kind of, I mean, if we listed as, um, disposable or I hate to use that word, or disposition, um, I would like the board maybe to, to do some kind of a, what, what do we? If we think we wanted, you know, um, do something different with it, what is our goal for it to be? And then we do an RFP trying to find those people or we identify it and say, you have three months to give us proposals and then we, you know, figure out the highest and best use for the public and, um, the community moving forward, you know? If we've identified it as something we should go with.
I say we just challenge the EIC committee to put out an RFP for solicitation of proposals from all groups and all parties.
Right, and we give a timeline and, um.
And put something in there that they're gonna, that they're gonna work with a couple of the, uh, people in our community to find out if we can incorporate, you know, the historical society, I suppose.
Well, bottom line, it's a large piece of property in the middle of our downtown. I mean, we haven't done the best job maintaining it over time. It's not like the grass is greenest, you know, doing whatever. So, I mean, I'm not, that's not a slight to DPW. I don't mean it that way, but we don't have a sprinkler irrigation system on there. So right now it's not, you know, it's not like super like green or anything because we don't have any water anyways, um, or anywhere. But I guess I, I just, whatever happens there. Um, it needs to, it, we don't want to, um, lose control to somebody that maybe won't maintain it in the right way because it's three and a half acres in the middle of our downtown. So, um.
On the flip side, I, I do have to say it's nice to see the, uh, the community trying to figure out a way that they can take that property and, and utilize it in the way the community wants.
Yep.
It's good to see the community put their money where their mouth is. So I have to applaud that.
For sure. Need them to be engaged, that's for sure. We're just, we're just seven people. We, we need to listen to how many people do we have now in this community, but yeah, everybody has a voice. Okay, um, so then next is Fourth of July Grand Marshall. Um, I mean, obviously we did not have a parade last year, so I know we have a letter from Nancy from, um, asking, you know, to, to both superintendents. I know um, Lisa had reached out to me, we in the past have had a, um, sometimes we've picked a, um, co. You know, we've agreed on the grand marshal for the community. So I don't know if we're wanting to do that again or.
We wanted one from Osable and one from Osco.
Right, and then Lisa worked, reached out to me to ask, you know, would we be interested in having a co, um, person? So and I actually have gotten one recommendation, um, from somebody that sits on the EIC. So I can share that with the board as well. But.
Can you share that now?
Oh, sure. Rosemary Network, um, uh, um, made a recommendation that Chris Kitchen serve as the, uh, I believe is what her email said.
It's a good choice.
We, we each have picked somebody separate in the past and we've had joint, um, or, you know, we've each agreed on somebody, so.
Sure.
I guess just give it some thought between now and Monday and we can go from there. Then we have the superintendent interview committee. I know that, uh, Tim Freel had indicated he would like to be on the committee. I believe he sent an email out to the board stating the same. But I know he did tell me that directly. So far we have four applicants. I forwarded those to all the board members. I believe it's four. Sorry if I'm miscounting.
Regardless on who's on the board, every, every board member is going to have the opportunity to interview every applicant, correct?
Regardless, I, I'm sorry.
Hearing him.
Yeah, me too. I'm sorry.
Every member of the board will be, will be, uh, have the opportunity to interview every applicant.
Regardless if they're on the committee or not.
I think we should stick with the process that we did this last time. I liked it. I thought ranking them, seeing everybody and zooming, zooming them and ranking them and then, or looking at the, I'm sorry, looking at the resumes, ranking them. Zoom meeting, rank them again, and then this time I would like to be able to meet a person. Like the top three.
In the past, in the past, just the recent one, did every board member get the opportunity to interview or be part of the interview process for every applicant?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think the committee just handled the negotiations.
Okay, that's, that's just what I wanted to clarify.
Is, is that correct, Bill, that the committee just handled the negotiation part?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much. That's, uh, the, the committee handled that part. Previously, the, the committee helped whittle down the, you know, if you, if you have eight or ten applicants, you kind of whittle it down. Although we did, I think all the, in each case, each board member uh, did a ranking of each one of the things. It wasn't, it wasn't left to the committee to make any decisions on, on the members.
Yeah, thank you, Bill, because there, there was no pre-whittling. There was just the board.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay. So basically, the whole board serves as the interviewer, interviewers, whatever the proper term would be, but we do have a committee that, um, then will work on the negotiation part.
Correct.
Right, okay. Right. Okay, do we need to discuss that anymore or are we good? Sounds like we're good. Our eight wrecker policy changes. I know that this actually was just brought up at the nine one one meeting on Wednesday, that the county, um, uh, while they've been talking about it for, sounded like a year and a half maybe, I think. Um, that they are no longer going to be, um, managing, uh, the wrecker services, um, for calls. Um, so they want each law enforcement agency to develop their own policy and then get that to them and then they will, um, follow that policy. So. I was just gonna ask Mark if he did it and, um, or had, had a policy in place and lo and behold, they got this. Or we got this, so.
I read through it. I like it so far. There's a little bit of, of, uh, basic grammar that needs to be fixed. There's a missing parenthesis in the first paragraph. And then, uh, just, you know, little stuff on, uh, item twelve. Oh, it's the, uh, on item twelve, it says, the service provider must answer all telephone calls for service requests within seven rings or relinquish its claim to the two. I'm assuming that's to the tow. So that should probably be, uh, fixed so that it's proper. And then, uh, oh, and they mentioned that, uh, some of the things that they can get, uh, that it says in there that they don't want any magnetic signs on the tow vehicles. And so if the, uh, if the, uh, Osco to Police Department notices that vehicles are showing up with, uh, those magnetic signs, I mean, it's in capital letters, so they better not. That's, uh, that should be in, included in the, uh, in the areas that they can be removed for. And the other, the only other thing I'd like to see on here is that I heard tell of, uh, towing companies creating additional companies. So that they could have a whole bunch of their own companies listed on this, on this, uh, you know, so that they could get more of the toes by creating more companies. And I'd like something that, uh, you know, a, a line number nineteen that restricts that. Other than that, it looks great.
So what you're describing is something that prevents a monopoly.
Yes, so if I open tow company A and I get tow company A onto the list of.
I understand.
Oh, okay.
I get it. Yep, yep, but you're just putting the point that that would be the, that's the underlying, the underpinning point of the comment. Make sure you don't have anybody who tries to create a monopoly.
Yes.
Taking one other competitor and creating six other companies of their own.
Right.
Yeah, so they get, so if there's only seven, they get six of the, of six of the seven toes before the other company even gets a phone call. I think that's, that, that shouldn't, that's not in the spirit of the, uh, of the ordinance.
It's gaming, it's gaming the system as well.
That's right.
So, yeah.
All right, well, that would be the agenda.
Cool.
Twenty seven. Um, so just to summarize my notes, unless there were more comments on the wrecker policy. No? Okay, so the notes I have from, again, this is number five, consider need for follow up or additional information. Um, notes I have for, uh, Monday night is, um, can't read my own notes. Um, May twenty fourth, regular meeting minutes. We have a few changes there that we're gonna get um, revised and then back out. Resolution twenty twenty one dash eighteen, we're gonna email to Tim Freel, um, the resolution itself. And then we are going to change the, the agenda item as correct. But the resolution itself needs to be changed to twenty twenty one instead of twenty twenty. And then I also have twenty twenty one DWRF bonds. We're checking on account numbers. Um, that Mitch is proposing that they be broke down to, so we're gonna review those. And then under cost of living increase, um, uh, Bill had done some numbers for what would be a fifteen percent increase and he's gonna get those, um, numbers to Josh. To revise those documents. Was there any other follow up stuff or in additional information that we needed for Monday besides that?
Sorry, go ahead, Bill.
Oh, you were, you were going to send that, uh, inter local agreement to the attorney?
Oh, he had already said it.
Okay, all right. Have word back from him by Monday night. Regarding that.
I don't know. He said he would, he would have it done by then or not.
Okay, all right.
We, we might have something.
Who are we going to have alter that, uh, tow, the wrecker policy? Is that's.
Um, well, I guess if they're not like big policy changes, Jeremy, and they're more grammatical, I guess my thought would be that, um, we get those to if they're, they're mainly grammatical, weren't they?
Yes.
Clarification.
Except for the, except for the clarification of the improperly marked vehicles with the magnets as, as, uh, cause to remove the company from the tow list. And adding item number, uh, number nineteen about, uh, you know, making sure that, that one company doesn't generate a bunch of sub-companies to have their name on the list more often. That's, that's a policy change and that's gonna, I, I think that should be in there and unless the other board members disagree, then who's gonna write that in there?
Well, it was drafted by Mr., with, by Mark David. So I would say, can you just put, can you put that in? I, I guess what does the board want to do? That we would, um, make those recommendations on Monday night? Then for, um, Mark to make those changes and come back or ask him what his thoughts were, you know, before. What do you think?
I'd like, I'd like to see his, his comments to the, to the feedback. I mean, I wouldn't want to bypass him. I mean, he's provided this initial draft and I think this is a. you know, our comments came from that. I think I'd like to know what he has to say about those, uh, those two comments and then what he thinks the solution might be.
So could you summarize those in a, just a quick email, Jeremy?
Sure.
And then we can get those to Mark.
And so where is he? Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, then we can get him to Mark. Um, I mean, as long as he's not on vacation or something next week, I would assume he could look at him Monday and then um, get some feedback to us.
I won't be able to, I won't be able to send that email until I get ahold of I T right on Monday. My password changed again. So.
Oh, well, why you just don't, do you have a personal email? You could just send it from that?
Uh, yeah, but with the whole FOIA thing, I'm not gonna start tying in personal accounts. I'll just call him up and, 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 and talk to him about it or, or write them out and uh, and bring it over to him for his review.
Okay.
Cool.
All right. Over two and a half hours too. You actually passed two and a half hours now.
Oh, yeah. Great, well, I think we're done except for uh, public comment. So everybody is um, unmuted, so if you have public comment, speak now or forever hold your peace.
Until Monday.
Until Monday.
All right, I moved to turn.
Well, I might want to give him one second, but yeah.
I thought we gave him ten, but okay.
All right, uh, anybody, anyone, anyone? Okay. Then go ahead.
I don't think we did, we're just adjourned. I think you can just call it.
Okay, we're gonna call this meeting adjourned at six thirty. Wait a minute, I saw something pop up. Gary Oil by citizen request only per crazy. Oh, I don't know what that is, okay.
That's on the tow re, that was.
On the tow thing, yeah. Okay, all right, so we are adjourned at six thirty-two. Thank you and have a good weekend, everybody. See you Monday.
You too.
Bye-bye.
Bye.